October 6, 2025. If everyone would join me to say the one.
To the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, would you take your roll call, please?
Member Leicher. Member Pacer.
Here.
Petroselli.
Here.
Stone. Vitka.
Here.
Waterman Kopa.
Here. Thank you very much. And Jerry Brito and Christina, yourself. And since we don't have a chance to review the minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
A second?
Staying.
Okay.
I'll second.
And so now let's have any discussion. I previously asked Carol if she would add on page three, the motion for 5365 to to state that it was for both log 2025 PB 12A and S. Any other discussion?
You're not going to be able to vote on it. If, well, he's going to abstain.
He's not going to abstain from the minutes.
Then what did he just say? He just said he was abstaining.
I wasn't here for the meeting.
They'll approve in next meeting.
Are you going to abstain?
It's just the minutes, Molly.
Does it even want?
Off the record, how can we even read about 27?
Okay, okay, fair. Okay, then we will table this and come back to it in November.
Or a special meeting if that happens.
Sure. Okay. Next on the agenda, I would like to quickly go off agenda to make a statement for an item that was pulled off this agenda for 111 and 121 California after crossings for the site plan review revised. It was only for site plan review that was put on the agenda, and I'd like to ask the code enforcement officer if per my memo dated 9/18/23, if Natale has been cited for architectural deviations from the approved plan. Because I'm hoping that they will also be coming before this planning board for any modifications that they're requesting for architectural deviations. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda on our new business, log 2025 PB 16 for 5845 Main Street Sketch Plan Review. If someone's here representing the project, you just come forward, state your name for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
I don't think one has copies. I do have handed up copies. Handled copies in case I'm. Let me have a sample board of materials here that I'll reference in a minute. Okay. Good evening, Board. My name is Mike Berger with Southern Architects here at 541 Main Street in Williamsville. I want to take a moment just to thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and present our project. We are looking for a sketch review of a project that we're interested in doing for an addition to an existing building at 5845 Main Street. We're looking to do an in-kind addition to the existing building, keeping the character of the building intact, do an addition that's complementary to that existing style and design in order to expand the building for the use as a cosmetic van laser center. The addition is approximately 105 feet by 20 feet. Maintain the existing parking lot. It has a total of 27 parking spaces. We're not introducing any additional parking. We have no intentions of changing the layout of the parking or curb cuts. Just refishing, screwing it up, restripe and things like that. It is located in the empty district. So things to consider would be transparency of the addition. But we also wanted, you know, be mindful of the activities going on in the building. So they can't, you know, really based on the nature of the business, it really doesn't want to have a lot of arched fence and windows because of the nature of the business. And again, parking, I believe we meet the more than the minimum criteria. 10 spaces, I believe, is what we would be required to have, and only 27 existing. We are proposing this as a zero lot line along the side street of full, putting the addition right against the property line. We are interested in providing some landscaping as necessary as we can provide. But again, we got to see where that lot line is to the sidewalk and what kind of space we have and what kind of landscaping would be suitable to survive in whatever area we have left to deal with there. As I mentioned, we have a sample board with some materials. We are proposing a composite wood-like siding, horizontal siding, with a veneer brick, natural wood accents on the posts, some of the trim, and the use of a copper material for view gutter and up and down lighting. Painting the existing building to match the new materials. With that, I would open up for any comments or questions.
So where's the sidewalk on your drawing here? So you're going right to below?
We're going right to the property line. My assumption as of right now is that the sidewalk starts on the other side of the property line. But I don't have any survey drawings at this time that reference where the sidewalk is, so I'm assuming that.
Okay, because how would you, would you be able to put any kind of screening between the building, any kind of landscaping? Are you going to have any room?
That's what we want to see, what we have for room, yeah, to be able to do that.
So the desire is what's in the rendering, number one?
Correct. Assuming that we have the room for that to work.
Yeah, when you say paint the existing bone the same color as?
Color to match the new materials.
And retaining the brick as it is?
On the existing building, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, just paint.
Okay.
And then the new roof is black?
On the new addition is black.
Okay. And then is the old roof can replace?
We're going to replace them with a black asphalt architectural shell.
And that's the color that you're proposing for the entire building, then?
Those would be the color schemes for the palette of the building.
What's this, the one piece over there?
So that's the natural wood, natural wood trim. So there's some posts on the coverings for the entries. So we're proposing those posts to be the natural wood.
And then the corner on the windows, the sill on the top of the under the windows, and then the corners is another color, lighter color?
I believe, yeah, the rendering, we showed that to show some contrast on it because it was really reading, very, very the print is hard to see all that with the texture of the paint and the different materials. So it would still be of the same color. It would just be wholly different with the texture of the material.
So it'll all be, come out to the monito?
Yes.
Except for the lighter posts.
Lighter posts and the copper, yes.
So do you think the trees on full are going to survive with this addition going in?
That is something we're looking at. We've discussed. We would try to keep them if they can be.
Well, they're not on your property. They're on the east end.
Right.
And you, this addition will kill them because the tree can't be is where your, where your addition is proposed. They're very mature trees. You see them?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm sure you heard us talking. It's not a two-story addition. We've gone through this before. So what are you proposing to do about that? It's an empty district. We don't have leave-in there.
Yep. I mean, you can go to the ZBA.
Yeah, we did explore a two-story addition. It really did not fit with the, it's a one-story building with a, usable attic space, so it really isn't lend itself to a two-story addition because of the nature of the existing building. So we did explore two-story options. It really took away a lot of the character of the building to make it work. So we would be looking for a single story. Hopefully, we keep it in context with the existing building.
Right, but this court can't give you that.
Sure.
The ZBA has to do that.
The only other thing I had, as you already mentioned before, is where the handicap parking is. The handicap parking, somebody with a mobility device would have to cross the main curb cut that goes to Main Street, which is probably how most people are going to come in and out of the building.
Right.
Seems really pretty unsafe.
Yeah, again, we're proposing to keep the existing parking. So I think the other option would be to put it at the rear, and then they would have to walk around the entire building to get in. The main entrance is going to be at the front.
So there's no other, there's no other?
It could be, we can put it. There is an employee entrance at the front. It's not intended to be used for us.
But I think even if you just move it a little further away from the curb cut.
It's going to be restriped, so I mean, yeah, we can stripe it anywhere.
At least we'll take it for that.
Sure.
Of course.
Yeah, it's not the most convenient space. I mean, you know where the front walk is, and this is not the most, it's not the closest space to that front walk.
No, it could be placed everywhere.
Corner where the parking lots come together in the square, is that going to be like the trash enclosure or area?
That would be the idea.
At this early stage, are you using totes or dumpster?
I believe it's going to be a house.
So how will that dumpster be accessed if the striping is not changing? You said you want it in the far corner?
It would be in the diagonal corner of the.
Yeah, how would that be accessed? How would a dumpster get out of there?
It would be roll, it would roll out the dumpster.
You can't. There's a parking spot on both sides of it.
If the dumpster closes, it goes into that square. With the doors facing the wall.
Okay. Do you have enough room for that? Yeah, I think that needs to be modeled when this project, if this project moves forward with this.
Sure.
You need to move around the parking lot.
I know, I noticed that today when I was doing my research, you can get ready in this parking lot.
Yeah, interesting. Very interesting. And are you proposing to keep these two stops?
Along the property?
Along the full residential, are you going to start?
Yes.
And so what is with the subdivided property that's listed on your site plan? So it's north line of sub lot 1.
That was, the survey that we worked off of was an older one, and that's what was on there. I don't know if they're going to update it to, maybe we have to look it up.
Okay, well, you're looking for multi, multi-element screens, especially since you're building residential. Looks like your neighbor has screened their side, but. So are you keeping the curb stops?
As parking spaces, I believe so.
Right now they're on the lawn next to the fence. Looks like it's your neighbor's fence. Doesn't look like you have one. So are you proposing a fence of your own?
At this time, we're not, but it's certainly something worth discussing.
Yeah, I mean, looks like the snowplows have pushed these curb stops all over.
Yeah, there would be places to have it.
Well, place back doesn't mean that's where they stay, right? Yeah, so, put some stuff on accessible parking, dumpster location, about where the proposed addition is going because of the mature trees that will kill, as well as the fact that this board cannot offer you a one-story solution to your architectural project.
I mean, whatever that's someone.
I'm not really sure if it's, because I think that it's showing. I'm not sure. So it'd be nice to know if that's a property you're working with, or if that's the neighbor's property.
That would be something.
No, that would be great.
It would look like this. And you'd replace the curb fence.
Well, depends.
Other than, yeah.
Depends where that sub lot is.
Other than that sub lot. There's no, so there's no garbage totes? There's no garbage enclosure in there now? Maybe you're looking at it? So you, are you proposing to kind of fence that area in at the back, adjacent to your neighbors?
Oh, they have to.
We're doing an enclosure for dumpsters. Once we figure out where the dumpster came down and how it can already take, we would do a closure.
So if they were to lose parking spots, would that be considered reconfiguration of parking? I assume. So if you had to reconfigure parking spots because the corner of that area you're talking about literally has two parking spots that make the corner. So it is a reconfiguration of parking, so that would be triggered.
Yep.
And the lots resurfaced and the sidewalks repaired and all that?
Yeah, the sidewalks were intended to be repaired.
Can you at all provide, though, an accessible route to this building? Because right now there's a step there. So the accessible route is actually out to, off the property line, down the sidewalk, up the path to the front door.
Oh, yeah, you guys will switch that here.
But this is actually all curved. So again, it's like this is like an accessible route. Off the property.
And we can look into it.
That would be great. Um, what's the lot? How many acres is this property?
It's 106.75 by 240. So 0.5691 acres.
And the total of the building is 64, 6,477 square feet. That's including the attic space. That's the total square foot of the building.
Did you say the attic is accessible?
The existing attic.
The attic?
I guess she's giving you the total square foot.
Why would you include the attic? What's the footage, square footage?
Of the building?
Of the building.
It's 6,477 square.
But why do you say with the attic? The attic has nothing to do with that.
I was just saying.
Okay, we heard that in work session that you're planning on removing the PBs from the roof?
Yes, those, yes.
Are you going to landfill that or recycle it?
That I don't know. I don't understand.
I just heard you to recycle it.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
Considering generators, have you, aren't they anticipated? Generators?
There's many discussions of generators.
Not kind of expected, it's a little.
Have you talked about signage at all to replacement?
Uh, just replacement. There's a monument sign on site, so just do the kinds of.
Well, but they show the pivotal window coming back, so that signage must be going.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no signage, just the signage at the.
And obviously no split systems because you'd be in the right of way.
For the, the first.
Inside the building.
There's existing condensers on the inside, the outside, the existing.
But that's where your addition is going, okay.
No, on the parking lot side. The back, in the back, in the back area on the there's existing condensers on the, I'll call it inside side of the building.
Yeah, that's where your addition is going.
No, the addition is going on the outside, towards full.
The units are between full and your building right now.
No, the condenser is inside the inside side as well.
Okay.
I just see the trash containers.
Maybe it's heavily screened by the landscape?
There's a, there's a condenser in the building. That's where we propose to put it, regardless of what's existing. With screen, whoops.
So what are you doing about the landscape pad?
The landscape pad would be integral to the screen of the village.
There's no room between the, maybe they're mature. So you're going to rip everything out and do all of it?
Backseating us.
So any other utilities that you'll have to deal with for upgrading? Obviously, you'll need higher electrical. They're going to come off of existing, and then is it underground or? Let's see. Is it fed off of full or underground? You need to lock it up to the underground. It's on the rear of your property line. But then it must be underground on the property, so.
For the record, my name is Dave Sutton from Southern Architects here. Kate, you bring up a really good point regarding the two-story addition. We're kind of gray on that in terms of whether the addition has to be two-story. You were a little bit confused. Mike was trying to explain to you, there is actually a second floor to this building. It's in the attic space, but it is a legal inhabitable space. So it's technically a two-story building. I'm not sure if the addition itself has to be a two-story addition.
There's no ambiguity on that.
Pardon?
It does. All it's, what it says is "New building construction and additions fronting along Main Street or any intersecting street shall be a minimum of two usable stories."
Correct. Okay, so, so I know you were confused about the reference to attic. There is a small second story. We do do a lot of exploration on the two-story addition, and it was not working. I think what we're going to probably have to do is go in front of the ZBA to plead our case or petition the fact that a one-story is more appropriate in keeping the character of this building. We feel as though the character of this building is definitely worth preserving and expanding upon. Any two-story addition would be very challenging along full and maintaining a single-story structure with the small attic space that we have. So, and I think what we'll do too is I want to make sure that from an architectural standpoint, that we are at least heading in the right direction. Appreciate all the feedback. We will further develop the site plan and acknowledge that there are going to be some components, as it be condensers, dumpster enclosure and stuff that may adjust the site plan. Our goal is to not change it much at all, to maintain the existing approval. But I think with the introduction of those things, we will focus a little bit more on making what we do have there better. And it might be a relocation of condensers. Be interested to know this board's input, whether we should maintain them on the ground or we should put them up on the flat roof, which we could screen adequately up there. We could relocate existing condensers. They're currently located in the green space now to the roof, as well as any future ones. And that might help us, but once again, that brings on a little bit of a challenge. And if, you know, we don't, we have the ability to screen it, but in a different way up there. If this board is interested in us pursuing rooftop equipment, which will maintain a more appealing visual at grade level, we'd be willing to consider that, but I'd like to hear the board's input on that.
I think that's getting into the weeds. This is sketch plan review. And for me, you haven't gotten approval for a one-story building yet, and then it's going to get taller, and then that throws off your architectural elevations. So let's go one step at a time with this.
Okay.
That's my feeling anyway, as far as the condensers. It was simply noted, you'll, you propose something, but shown it in 3D rendering that's different from what's the hardline, what the hardline drawings are, as far as building to the property line. And then, you know, you've had problems before with condensers on the side of the building. So therefore, where are you planning to put them? So if it's on the other side of the building, that's an answer. Rooftop, that's an answer, but only if you, you know, pursue some kind of variance or redesign and.
For the overall height, story, number of stories.
Mm-hmm. What does that do to your, to your elevation to screen them?
When we originally submitted, we were expecting some type of feedback from the review process. Also, when I met with Gary to submit project, we were asking questions such as this, we haven't received their formal review. It might not be triggered until we actually.
Right, so you need to go through site plan, and then when you put an actual application for architectural site plan review, I'm sorry, that says to be, you're in for sketch plan, did I say site plan or sketch plan? You're in for sketch plan. The formal review from the planning department doesn't come in until you've done architectural site plan submission.
But it's obviously this board's position that, you know, we need to go to the ZBA in terms of the number of stories.
Or do a redesign. Those are your options.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, and the only other thing I would suggest and make help is to have the neighboring buildings somehow portrayed in your renderings or, I mean, and just even elevation so that you can kind of see the kind of access either side of that.
See how it relates in proportion. We can expand our rendering.
A lot of times people are so myopic just looking at the building itself, but.
The community plan was definitely leading in the direction of multi-stories in that area, especially of the village.
Right.
So to see a one-story would be disappointing to me, but, you know, you'll have to see later. Look, bears.
Understood. And understanding the fact that we are adding to a one-story current building, we're trying to maintain.
Apparently, it's two-story.
Well.
Just saying.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Glad this is happening on this facility.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
And so you're not automatically on for architectural site plan review next month, so you'll have to get your paperwork in and see where that lies.
Okay.
All right, so next on the agenda is a site plan modification for 5674 Main Street, log 2025 PB 17 for the generator. Can you approach the DIES, give us your name for the record, and it's I would like to.
Hello, this is Eric. I'm the owner of the building, Phil Skoropin. And I'm the, I'm the tenant of the building. And what we're proposing is something we, we really need. We like to think we would need it, but during tax season, we lose a day to go in and get it. And then you have to, and that's the power outage, maybe that's the whole reason. So the proposed generator that we put in is in a spot, it's to the corner of the back of the building. There's enough space in there that now when we put the generator, it doesn't change any of the parking area. We can screen it properly. It takes you right now where we put our, our garbage totes, and we're going to dress it up a little bit, wing it up a little bit with some favors. And it should be a, you know, not a, it should be something that will look detract from, you know, from our building. Really put some money in our building, it looks really quite nice now. And landscape around it with some junipers, they stand about five feet tall. It'll actually be a little. It'll actually be a little bit taller, I think the unit on the sketch I gave, it's about three, six inches tall. So, um, so that's about it. It's, I mean, I, it's kind of a new thing for me. You guys are gonna have to help me along if there's, if there's any other question.
Just where were your trash being relocated to?
Right next to it.
Next to it.
There's a, there's enough room there. There's enough room to put the, uh, the totes so that one's in front of the other. It actually don't look nicer, I mean, now it's gonna be not finished off.
And there's some sort of, um, concrete or something like that?
No, it's, uh, it's, it was, there was a planning in there. There were bushes in there, I pulled them out, they looked horrible. Anyway, and I said, well, I wanna re-landscape this, and we had to talk about putting a generator right there, so. It would be, there's enough room, enough space to meet the, the specifications of generic, who would, it's the unit we would get. Um, there's enough space to provide the airflow that's needed and still have enough room for our totes to be in there. And we can screen it, you know, we can screen with, uh, these, uh, our, our landscaper has, uh, proposed, uh, very, a type of juniper, I guess, you know, that kind of semi-tall plant. And it should look really, really nice. I want really, probably need to know what's there, say, through. Well, until it's, pardon me? Until it's, uh.
Or until it's testing itself?
Uh, it tests, yeah, it tests once a week, I guess, or whatever.
Yeah, it makes a little bit of noise then?
Yeah, yeah.
How, how long?
Unfortunately, we're not in much of a residential thing right here. It's all, our neighbor is, uh, is, uh, fueled, uh, rap shot building, ten rap shots building.
And I thought I saw two generators on that, on the east side of it.
Uh, that could be, I don't know, that could be. I know there's a generator on the other side, in the old building that the Rose was in. There are kind of like, we share the parking lot, it's a small generator. That's up against their, what would be the east side of their building. This will be right in the, uh, north, north corner, northwest corner of ours. And on that side is, you know, it's all commercial, it's, I don't know if any of it's really living, any.
Just two doors down, there's a residence.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I think that's a, that's a, a mixed use over there.
No, not even, well, it's, it's a mixed-use property, it uses the residential only.
Right.
So, um, it, it tests itself one time a week? How long does the test last?
Uh, I think this is a, I don't really know.
I think they're twenty.
Oh, I, I, I don't know. And we, we got one at home. We live off Lancaster, we had it at home, and I, I really don't know.
Do you, can you schedule the tests or is it just automated?
Yeah.
Set them on a timer.
Yeah, we schedule ours, I think it, I think it does it at nighttime or something.
What, what time at night?
What, at home?
No, for this unit, like.
We could schedule any time, you know, that, I mean, the only neighbors that really would hear it would be the business guy.
But, uh. You, you say that, but I don't know how, how loud it is, I don't know how many decibels this thing is putting out what it's.
It's, it's actually a small unit, we, we didn't even go, we're going with a residential unit. They said, uh, the contractor, or electrical contractor said, for what you need, other than in the summertime, because of your air conditioning units, he said, so shut one of them off, you know, if, if you have to. So it's a residential unit, it's not even, it's not even a big unit, it's not a commercial unit. And as a result, we're gonna save some money doing it. It's, you know, fairly inexpensive, we were surprised, it's about a six, seven thousand dollar unit. And then, you know, they install, so about eleven thousand dollars, twelve thousand, maybe there, with the landscaping, I mean, I put in there thirteen thousand or so, whatever. I, I can't remember what I had on the, um, uh, on the proposal, but, um. So it's, it's a small unit. People probably in the village for the residents that have units like this, of the same size, I would have answered. But it's a, it's a big thing for us. We lose a day, that's, that's trouble for us. It's a real potential problem, you can't, you can't get those days there during tax season, it's really hard.
So, in, in this research, it says that a residential generic puts out about sixty to seventy decibels, so then for that twenty, thirty minutes.
What's the, what's the kilowatt? Or the model?
I'm sorry.
What is the, what's the kilowatts of the model you're talking about?
You know? That is a good question. I didn't come up with it. I talked to Stated, I brought these.
I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at the.
David's on the chart.
Yeah, it doesn't have it on there. It's got the model number.
Oh, twenty-six.
It has a model number on there.
Twenty-six kilowatts is sixty-eight decibels.
Yeah, so that's like a vacuum cleaner or a car.
Yeah. Should I give you an extra?
Uh, yeah. Thank you. So then, you get to set it when, when the tests are, um. If any of your neighbors complain, you'd be willing to just modify the weekly test?
Yeah, and Kate, I, I would, I would, like we did at home, I talked to our neighbor, like, directly over, I said, what do you want us to do with? Or my wife did, and I wasn't really involved, and they, she had it set, she had the time set. And they, they agreed, so we'll do it at one or two in the morning, we won't, you know, in the summer and the winter. Summer, we got air conditioning running, winter is closed, so.
Yeah. I'm not sure the morning, me morning hours are the right time to do this, but, um, yeah, talk to your neighbors and.
It's currently a quiet test mode. Too. Results are quieter.
So, okay. So any more discussion? Okay, so I'll make a motion. Any more, Tom?
No, I'm good.
Okay, make a motion for log twenty-two-five PB seventeen for fifty-six seventy-four Main Street site plan modification for a generator. Um, approve as submitted with the following clarifications. That if at any point a piece of the landscape, proposed landscaping or screening dies, it must be replaced with an in-kind type and size to match existing. If a piece of the landscaping is removed, it must be replaced, um, with the approved blue point juniper of no less than, all of them would be no less than five, of five feet as proposed and approved. Um, and if you choose to put in a different landscaping for the generator, then you must return to planning board for a new approval. Um, and as stated in your proposal, the blue point junipers that will be installed will be five feet tall. Um, and that the unit that you are installing produces under seventy decibels.
By the way, how long is it? I honestly don't know. How, how long is it, yeah?
Six, I don't know, sixty-eight decibels.
It's a, it's a car or a vacuum cleaner.
It, it is evidence, right?
Um, so it's about seven, it's under seventy decibels. And that the garbage totes will remain in the current location, just placed stacking closer to the structure.
Similar to a dishwasher, clothes dryer, or normal conversation. According to AI.
You're saying over there?
Says sixty-eight decibel sound is a moderate noise level similar to a dishwasher, a clothes dryer, or normal conversation.
One second.
Second.
All favor, five, motion passes.
So, now how, how does it, I don't know how this works, how does this work? What, what do I, um?
You'll need to submit a building, right, I think you're still gonna need a permit from the building department. You'll get a written, do you send out a?
The town does the generator permits.
Oh, okay, so you'll go next door.
I see.
To get that permit.
Okay. So I would ask you go to the town for that, and when can I go? Can I go as soon as I'm ready?
Yes, why, just give me a call.
Okay.
Cause I'm, I'm probably gonna have to, I'll, I'll have to update the information in the system and then let them know.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, all of you tonight, for, thank you. It is, it, important thing for us, it really is. And, and we wanna do it right, we really try to do, uh, we wanna be good neighbors. We like every good neighbor.
Thank you.
But frankly. You know, I mean, some of our neighbors have been good, some have been a little, you know, and.
This is being recorded.
All right. Thank you very much. Good night. I'll call you later.
Okay. Use your solid, uh, conflict of interest for the next, um, piece of our agenda. Then we'll call you back in and and the next pieces. So. So why don't we come up and go through this while we hopefully last this time? So for the record, at this moment, we do not have a forum due to absences. Um, but we are going to discuss the proposals as submitted and see where we can. See if anybody walks in to bite us up with a photo.
I'm not really sure.
So, so I'll, I'll call you up for a log twenty-two-five PB oh-nine A first, so we'll talk about our architecture first and then we'll move on to the site.
Great, um, thank you, thank you, Mark coming out here for CRS, also with me here, Joe and Rich from Lobella. I'm gonna briefly just kind of summarize the topics we talked about when we were recording the last time, as far as the comments we had and some of the discussion we had. And I'm gonna turn it over to Joe, who'll go through the details of the changes that were made from what we showed you the last time. So, um, in no, in no particular order other than this is just how it sort of evolved at the meeting. One of the first things we talked about was the garbage room access and whether it was ramps or steps coming from the garbage room out to the curb. Um, also related to that, we, um, we talked about adding some concrete pad area down to curb, so that's, that's what we. Next topic we talked about was some form of landscaping embargo that was proposed and the fire submission was concrete, straight out to curb. Board wanted some landscaping there, decided to develop some different solutions. Uh, there was some questions regarding, uh, cement pavement in the parking garage, and I believe we looked at that and it was not. The original time, um, Richard's shit, he said no, uh, and currently that, that's already poured, and it's been reported already, so we're difficult to change that now. Uh, next item that was on the list here was railing on the perimeter of the roof to give it a look like it was a patio, even if it's not gonna function as a patio. I believe that it gets, we'll know to do that as well. And one that was probably the more significant one, and I did, we had some, uh, questions about that, you worked through it, were the simulation of doors, um, in some of the right-hand side, as you look in the elevation, uh, to give that a little bit more feel of an entrance, you know, it's not gonna function, so that was. And then finally, just some minor details on the rear by, the rear elevation didn't have window moldings on it, and that was something I might have to, I cleaned up. So I think that was everything I had on, on my list from, from over here before we left. And with that, I'm turning over to Joe.
Hello, we're from Jordan's view from Lobella.
Yeah.
Thanks for having us again, hopefully for one of this time.
One and a half.
One and one and a half, I guess. Um, senior site, uh, pretty much, um, with the intent to go over the changes, um, and I was gonna give you a couple letters that I believe you folks have. Go over, uh, one by one if you need be, um, I know your, your thoughts on that, or, um, uh, which particular ones you wanna go over, or others, uh, I know Mark mentioned some, we can elaborate more on, and have a discussion on any one of those changes that, um, that's happened.
Want to just add questions per note?
Sure.
Yeah, trees, who's providing them, and what are they?
Um, the, you know, over providing trees, um, I know if, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have the specific information, but I always find contact with the town.
DPW for the village.
Yes. So I know you provided, kind of, I'm just work, handle that, trying to get that information. I believe we went about a couple variety of trees, species.
That you can choose from?
Yes, yeah, um, just, I don't know.
So you'll be going with the minimum caliper that the village puts in, all that?
Yeah, yeah, you follow that, those are very much.
Okay, so DPW standard, but village, the owner provides?
Correct.
Um. And then, so you said for point two, the drop, the drop apron was already poured, so it's asphalt or it's concrete?
It's, it's asphalt.
And there's even, there's no concrete apron either?
No, because, no, because the apron coming off the street is, is still, um, I believe that, my memory, my, I remember, um, I believe that was all poured as asphalt from where the sidewalk would be up to the, the garage door, and obviously the garage itself is asphalt. That is what was installed prior to we, uh, was coming up board.
What was that, what was approved?
We didn't, well, we looked, but we didn't see any sign that, that stamped concrete was what was approved. And even to the original, they're not.
Like there is no con, there's going to be concrete apron, because there's no concrete sidewalk across this right now, so you're gonna have to put one of those in. And you're gonna have to put a concrete apron.
Yeah, which is like those have, um, the blue site has, those are the concrete, uh, apron. Um, both transitions, you know, transitions to asphalt, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm trying to think back, have I ever seen a parking garage with an asphalt floor? This is extremely odd to me.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was already in place, like I said, when we came on board.
Right, but what, but what was that approved? Right, so we're here today to, to look at the modifications from what was originally approved versus what was installed and or proposed now. So was that approved last time? So we, we don't know that, so that's something that's gonna have to be reviewed. Cause these renderings are showing asphalt all the way, obviously that's not happening, you need concrete, in the village you'd have to provide a concrete sidewalk. That's a must, that's part of our, our code. And then there would be a concrete apron, because that's the part of the driveway that's gonna look like crap the fastest.
Yeah, well, so if I do show concrete, put in concrete sidewalk, then that, that transition, it will transition to asphalt.
They're really small.
The drawings are.
We did have full size.
I, I have the.
Or the thumb, we have the thumb drive as well.
Yeah, I have the thumb drive, but my, it's not working.
Okay, so there's a concrete apron, concrete sidewalk, and we just need to then do some digging on whether the, um, the concrete was proposed. So if, would anybody have a problem if they are now proposing asphalt inside of the building versus if concrete was previously?
I don't, as long as it's inside the building. I, because, I, I just, it, it, nobody would see it, really.
Yeah, my, my memory serves correct is that the interior garage was always asphalt, even on the original civil drawings. Um, obviously, one question is the, you know, coming up to the, to the garage, you know, with the driveway, uh, being a stamped concrete versus asphalt.
Or just regular concrete at this point?
But, um.
It's in place, so.
Yeah, it's in place, so.
So I guess we have to determine whether it was approved.
Right, so, um.
That's the thing, I personally wouldn't hold up the project on what's inside the building, whether it's asphalt.
Oh, we don't have to hold it up, it can be a position. But if it was originally approved as something, and whether we want to go back to it, or if no one wants to, you know, deviate from what's already installed, then that, that can, that can stay it, we can stay things without. All right. Zig it up, how, well, or is it a visual thing? And it falls apart inside your building, cause it's going to, cause people are three-foot turning in the same slot spots every single time, it's way to last, yeah. I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna be patching it and patching it and salt, it, it's, it's gonna be a disaster, but that's, whoever I guess owns it, um.
Everybody is.
Um, what I'm thinking about is what is right here?
Right here.
And you just, you just dig that out and put in concrete. They have to put, they're bringing a truck in anyway, right? That's one truck load that goes pretty far into that, into that covered area right there.
So it is clear that it does show on our site plan, that it is.
Yep.
A concrete apron and a concrete wall. Whether it's there now or not, it's.
Yes.
It sounds like the question is from the sidewalk to the, to the front of the building is really.
The garage.
The garage, yes.
The open garage.
I can ballpark it, it's probably eight feet.
No, not at all. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
We're talking about from here to here.
Oh, I thought we were talking here, no, just the.
Just the exterior.
Five feet, six feet?
Yeah, I've had, I mean, probably, yeah, four to, three, four to six feet.
Or from sidewalk to garage door.
Yeah.
That's a car probably.
That's probably, that's a lot more. How about concrete right up to the covered entrance, the covered garage? So from there in, if it's asphalt, you need to ask.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So what you can see walking by or driving by will be concrete.
Is there a garage door right there or is the garage door set back where?
It's set back, it's in the back line of the first floor.
So it's like two cars deep?
Yes.
Correct. That's the garage.
That's where you're used.
And that's just an opening.
That's, yeah, just a straight open.
So you're suggesting concrete. All the way to the opening or all the way to the garage door?
No, because it's open.
Just an opener.
Because it's in place.
I don't think that's going to be in place when they build that and they put the.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It's going to be jumped out.
Well, contractors already have, they'll, they'll have fun with that probably. But hopefully, hopefully very respectful.
Yeah, so if the board's okay with it going up to the opening in concrete?
Well, we don't have a form right now, so.
I got it.
Yes, so we're making notes.
Sidewalk still shows four feet instead of five, which is what the code says. Is that right?
Yeah, it should be five, I missed a comment.
It says four. The sidewalk now is integral to the rest of the concrete. I posted, so four foot is good.
Oh, it's where it connects. Yeah, where it connects to the existing sidewalk is four feet, but then it kind of chops, it chops down.
Well, is that, is that the adjacent sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever's left there.
Okay, so we're making it, we're expanding it on the. Okay, I just couldn't tell from the.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's going to, well, like, that's a DPW issue, right? Like, so that's another one of those things that making sidewalks in the village, that's like a whole different issue. Like, you need to meet the standard in the code for that. So if it says five, it needs to be five, you know? But we can't do anything about that. We can say, hey, you don't have five foot. Great, you paved all the way to the building, that's part of the site. But meeting the code of, of sidewalk is actually something separate.
But what I'm hearing is you, you integrated it to the building, so it's actually, it's five foot or maybe more.
Correct. Yeah, I believe that four foot section is not, because that's out of the property.
Yeah, after you're done with us, I believe, I don't think this hasn't gone to DPW crew chief or engineering yet, has it?
Uh, yeah, it has.
Yeah, they submitted comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did they have comments?
I don't think so.
DPW crew chief did not, and I think Ed Schiller said. Ed Schiller said, no comment on sketch, will review site plan when available. Right, is that for, hold on, no, wrong one, wrong one. Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that there was no, no comments.
So the railings and.
Yes, Ed Schiller said, no comments.
The railings over the garage. We inside them back in the actual sheer coping. Should better, it will be a better construction detail to add that way. And that's how the rest of the railing and the other kind of patio decks are under their, their inset of the sheer coping. We kind of try to give it a height where it was not, you know, too crazy as far as height. Outrageous, but it brings a kind of over the. Do we still want to go wide away by?
So we're on four now, right?
So we decided to add two transfers windows to the, on the north side of the two apartments. For technically the lead to the second or fourth apartment, the location. What I have light is what is, still be up to that wall space.
Which spaces are those in inside the building?
Kind of higher trenches, lights are rather than like small spaces still available.
Um, speaking of doors and windows, did we talk materials for those?
Um, not the last.
Okay, we need to, so let's talk materials. You know, we talked about type, but we didn't talk about actual material.
Yes, um, they are a, a new construction vinyl. The color, the color of the outside is black. You know, the theme of the.
So you said they're vinyl windows?
Correct, yeah, I forgot. Sorry, no, yeah. Hello, Jess. If I was only, these windows be forgiven by the owner and by windows. Vinyl, they're, they're narrow line. Frame and then they're at the vertical lines, actually on the elevations.
Okay, so my problem with them is, is the narrow.
The narrow?
So we're trying to replicate some buildings that fit into the character of the village. And when we take a vinyl window and put it in, it's a dead giveaway because it has a narrow profile. Is there an option to, to change those out to be like aluminum clad wood or something with a heavier sill? Sash or something?
Yeah, I mean, there are options out there for other manufacturers we can, we can look into, yes.
So the adjustments is to the material and the view line?
Material and view line, for me, together.
Looking for something a little bit more future.
Yes, so that it doesn't, I mean, that looks like it's not even a true divide, right? It's between the, the pane divide.
I mean, just as a side, we've used them before and vinyl windows, I came up myself. But they've come so far in the last four or five years, but.
I've installed them myself in the past five years, but I, I installed aluminum clad wood at the same time. And it, it's a very different aesthetic. You know, even if we're, we're not even talking energy performance at this point, we're just talking about, I mean, is there an option to do something on the pedestrian fronts of the building? At least to upgrade them there?
That street level?
I'm thinking the Mansards and the British Brick Building for sure. I mean, my personal opinion, I mean, we don't have to examine the budget, but, I mean, obviously I prefer aluminum clad wood everywhere.
Well, the aluminum clad wood presents another issue about interior finishing. I know it's part of the budget, but I think the vinyl is something that they did initially and we never questioned who did. So your, your question is your option.
There's prefinished interior wood, I mean, anytime.
I don't know the difference still between the price point, I'm not sure, but I don't know.
For those two buildings, it's, you know. What I'm talking about is this building and this building, those are the two at the streets. This building and this building, this is set back, this is set back.
Do you know it was originally free?
I'm not sure even got to that point in the approval, I'm not sure. All I know is we've been stunned on this recently with another set of construction where they called out wood windows, they put in vinyl. So I just want to be clear about what the expectation is right now in the motion, so that it's very, very clear. That's something that comes later on in the construction document.
So, so we're clear, I can just, I'll just say it again, you want, I'll leave it.
Be here?
Be here and.
True divide would be great on those two buildings.
True divide is usually more expensive. But I understand why you're asking for it.
Oh, not, I'm not even, I personally am not even asking for any kind of projects. I mean, I also think that by putting true divide wood, aluminum clad windows on those two buildings makes them look different than the buildings behind them even more, which is intention, right? We're, we're trying to make it look like phases of development for this.
It gives, it gives things to do in that because of the whole thing of all these other buildings. So I would never consider that otherwise, but for this one, we will certainly look at what you're asking and make sure that we will prove upon.
Is the interior finish of, of the apartments or are you going after a certain look in there? Case openings for the windows and are they, are they painted or have you gotten that part?
They're probably casey on them, like a normal residential kind of feel. You know, just typical wood casing, you know, sill or stool and an apron underneath it, just.
I'm just asking, I mean, we don't get it right to ask about the inside as much, but I'm, I'm thinking the outside has a black one, right?
Yeah.
And the inside could be, could be natural stain, it could be white, I just didn't know what you're.
Yeah, the, those, those particular windows allow us, you know, when we're looking at them, they're good by the owner. It was black on the outside, white on the inside. So, you know, based on how those windows were fabricated. So there'll be a white window on the outside, you know, on the inside when you're in the apartment, obviously it's black nature on the outside, so.
Black bar hustle gets in everywhere, so.
It is, yeah, part of the.
Nice to know the inside.
So, I mean, vinyl with brick, that, that becomes a difficult detail, right? So you've got these new replacement vinyls and what is the, is it brick mold around it?
It's not a replacement because it's a new, it's a change. So it's designed with whatever you are putting, getting married and up. If it's kind of flange, if it's kind of available, or flange or what else? I don't know much detail, Joe.
I'll also do those details, but chances are probably be, I mean, we probably have, we probably have the windows set where it would kind of cover the gap between the brick and this.
Yeah, so it's just a plant.
So you have, well, you have a brick return, so whatever powder the windows now, you won't see them often. Because then you'd be behind the brick.
Yeah, we would detail the brick as such to kind of create, you know, the return and then have a, have a coffin basically between the some more materials.
I mean, all the more reason for these two buildings to be something different. The, the windows are a dead giveaway because, I mean, I know we're trying to do a modernized historic feel to this, but those flat windows are going to be a dead giveaway because.
And if we proposed the UG, if they, if they did, it really wouldn't, by for the apartment usage, wouldn't have, you know, two different types of windows.
Same, right. And the doors, we talked about solid versus well light, what are, what are the materials?
So for the, for the main entrance and the second area entrance, that, the second set of stairs, that's, that was aluminum, aluminum to glass. Kind of store front framing. The doors are for trash room and the water room, they're in the middle, middle of the building. Those are just going to be a hollow metal or insulated metal or steel door. We're going to panelize it to kind of, panelize it and color it the same as the side to kind of, somewhat blend it in. So it's just not, it almost looks like the rest of the building and not kind of stick out as a set of doors. It's going to be.
People won't make the mistake to choose it.
Correct.
I like the panel. Did you figure out the step though for the totes and all that or?
Yeah, so, um, we would, yeah, so if we were to introduce a ramp, it's about a foot difference between sidewalk and that first floor level. So twelve foot ramp was just not ideal, there's no way we, we don't have. So, um, we were proposing a portable ramp that would go over the stairs, that we had a cut sheet that we provided, um, in the package, that property management for the owner would handle to bring it out, put over the stairs, put the toes, I was in just a portable ramp, so we could, it would, um, be stored, obviously, um, when not used. This, this is just what I found, um, there's others out there, there's a variety out there. Um, but that was kind of the solution, other than having to bring all the posts through the actual ramp, that we have in the lobby, and through the, you know, main, uh, door, in, uh, a weekly basis, so.
I'm, I'm going to take, go out and guess what they're really going to do, they're not hauling out a vertical ramp, they're just going to yank it down and then pull it back up. So, can we get like some kind of metal nosing on that concrete there, so it doesn't immediately look like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I was thinking, um,
I, I was thinking the exact same thing, I do. You know, that'll be part of the site plan, everybody, and then you're going to be like, no, I'm just going to go bump it above, and before you know it, the stairs-
Well, you gotta give them some kind of credit to take pride in the building, and say, you can't do that, but we, we will, we will put the metal guard on it.
And it's a, it's a footstap, right? So it's a footstap that does-
It, there's two, it's two six, two six inch.
Two six.
Yeah.
The difference is a foot.
Okay.
Because of the slope of the sidewalk.
Okay, I was like, well, we can't make leave a footstep, so like, how are we going to get that off or something like that? Okay.
Um, so I think we're at number six, I believe, um, yeah, just we, we had the, the vertical, um, buttons on the, uh, on the backside of the building, the one windows that were, wasn't one of them, did not have it, so, um, that's correct, that's for the type being, whatever window we go with, we'll still refer to that.
Could I just clarify, if we modify any of those for those two main buildings up front a bit, for the rest of the building?
I, I think I'm fine with vinyl being used on the rest of the windows for the rest of the building, if we can get us something, be fair, um, with a true divide, you know, upon those other two buildings.
So the thought is, okay, you got brick, you want it to be strong, and the brick, and the rest of it, we can be a little bit more, um,
Well, yeah, for my justification is those other buildings are setback from, from South Long Street, and that is something, the street of, of these, this, this building, except for those, this building is on, so, you know, I would say, oh, only do it on the first and second level, but it's going, it's not going to look right.
Right.
Right, so I would say-
Because they read this building the whole way.
Yeah, the other ones you're setting back.
Really hard for it, we'll do that.
The only thing I would point out is that-
Yeah, that'd be good.
The design standard itself, the way it's written says, window opening should be trimmed with an appropriate exterior. And, and it gives everything but vinyl, but it's sort of like we're adding vinyl to the list by doing it. I, I don't really have a problem with it, but just saying that, that's, that's, we're, we're now making a statement that vinyl windows are okay in all of, in our buildings.
Well, we're, we're clarifying that we're, oh, hold on, let me just do this real quick. Sorry. I was going to say, is he walking in? Okay, um, understood, vinyl is not an acceptable material, however, we're working with the applicants on what, what is at the street level, and what is put back on the site.
Right.
And it's very clear that these are all put back on the site, um.
I just want to make sure the resolution is very clear about that.
Agreed.
Because I don't want that to not-
Agreed, agreed.
I, I don't have a problem, I, I agree with everything you said about the building with the Mans, arguing the brick building, and those need to have a higher, those should have a higher quality, uh, rebuild material, which honestly conforms with the standard here.
Well, that, and I like how it's going to look different, um, with wood clad, true divide versus, um, versus a different type of window, it's going to look like it's different buildings, when it's really one, so, you know, I, I would love it if one of them had white exterior, white interior, and the other ones would be, you know, but, I mean, I think that's oversome, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm only, I'm only looking at it from the perspective of what, what our standard stage must be, and what, what we do might matter, so.
I think, I think if that's, that's something we can meet, you know, in the middle, we'll cut, put a little bit there, vinyl there, we can, we're up.
We're good.
For me personally. So a little bit of glass in the storefront, uh, steel panel doors on the trash room, and then moving over to the faux, um, doors on the old townhouses will be.
Um, we're assuming these those windows, we're going to extend a, a full panel below them, um, we kind of extend them, we kind of give that impression that it's, uh, it's a door location.
If you look at that elevation also, you see the windows have the, the additional wires and, and the doors that are big, you're not, so that's a small.
Okay, what is the material of the faux part of those windows to make them look like doors? Do you have a cut sheet of that?
No, the original thought would just be a kind of a, 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 like a brick panel, a little bit of-
Oh, you forgot, law division panel, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, but the idea was, I mean, just without, you know, without, the idea was just a little bit of kind of panel.
Is that a storefront system?
No, those are the vinyl, uh, so, but those are a different type of window, I mean, we either do what we plan, I mean, it could just be a little bit of panel, excuse me, that would get, um, installed underneath the window.
So I'm just, I'm trying to visualize what that detail looks like, right? So you've got glazing set in a frame, and then
There was like another, there was like another frame that would hold like a metal, a metal skin panel, kind of, in there.
But is it just one skin that goes right up against it?
No, I think the way it is, that it were, both panels were glass, so that glass would come into the middle of the room, or maybe front or back, but in the same spot as the panel below, so the panel below is not flush, there would be recessed, that they'll look like it's part of the system, that would be okay.
Okay.
So, quick question, so what I didn't, when we talked last time, you know, I see the buildings as two separate, two townhouses, is what I read, but not, not four, or six, whatever that might be. And I was okay, and I realized that, you know, these are operable, right? You know, living room windows and the bedroom windows on the first floor, right? But what I didn't, so in my mind, I was, I was going to be okay with one door, and then this one already has the recessed doorway back, and so in my mind, it was, you know, you walk, walk up to it or not, yeah, like, it's reading as two townhouses. So what I realized today, when I was preparing, was that this potentially is just, this is the one and only bedroom window for this one bedroom. So this is a living room that had the opportunity to have a working door, if we, if you had chosen that. This one is a bedroom window, this is a bedroom as well, right? And then this is another bedroom window, right?
Then it was a master.
That this is a master, yeah, so I, you know, you don't want to have an oper, so in my mind, I thought, oh, maybe they'll, maybe they'll have the living room door be operable, and then they'll have one of these other doors, uh, windows, just be a window here, so that each alcove has one door.
If I'm hearing you.
That's what I thought we were talking about in the last.
So perhaps leave this as a, looking as a door, and get that looking as a door, change this to look like a window, instead of just one.
I just hate to sacrifice, and, because I was, we had another project recently that they were proposing non-operable windows in apartments, and it made me crazy. I forgot whether or not that, to be able to get any, so this, this would be a non, if it was today, it was built like this, it would be a bedroom window with a non-operable, right?
Or, or you make it, it was a case that, um, that's acceptable, because a case that is, is a full set, a full frame, yes, glass, but the-
Kind of pig, to go along with what you're saying, because it's big.
Yeah.
Um, does that make sense to, to make this look like one of these, so that it's operable, now you do have, um, to, to-
Yep, and I, like I said, even, even, even that one would have been okay with me personally, but the way they'll read, you know, on the street is one on the left side of each alcove.
Yeah, no problem.
But there already is a door up that one, so it seems like it has to function.
And it is a narrow street, and the buildings are pretty complex, I mean, the, the view angles are not this, right? It's this, like you're seeing small portions of the building at once. Okay, so this one is going to become a window, and this one's going to become a window.
Um, we're going to leave this one, because that is-
It's a pepper, right?
Yeah. Oh, I see.
Just want to make it operable.
Do you want to have an operable that you can, you can-
Return both of those to look like these, and then just leave the, the door that's setback is, is a working door.
We have, uh, no problem.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I think it's a happy medium.
So, yeah, the way, the way to set up is each apartment itself, safe from the fire, um, each apartment, they're all have lighting, also they'll have rings on them. So if someone was in the apartment, they, uh, they can save the apartment, um, and, you know, they don't necessarily have to use a little pregress, um, because, I mean-
But it might be, it might be the most convenient way of getting someone in their department.
Agreed.
Especially if you have like a six inch left of your own street, you're just throwing that chair right through that window.
Yeah, right, well, that's, well, assuming you can get it through whatever the window glass is, I'd be motivated, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, uh, yeah, but, I mean, the way, the way it was really set up is for somebody, they can, they can stay safely in their apartment in case of a fire, I'm in wait for a fire rescue. Um, but, yes, but no, that's a second option.
That'd be good.
Um, the other thing is, just for clarification, first, like vinyl lights, I know in my time with residential that, um, I know they make windows where they, they have applied buttons on the outside and inside, they have a, a space that goes in between the glass, is that uncomfortable?
Yeah.
Instead of handling a screw-
Like a Sierra Pacific or something, yeah.
Yeah, well, instead of having like true, like divided-
I, I, yes, you know, as long as we're on the, on the be fair profile, right? So they'll still come in different profiles, so they should still look like a historic, so those, I think, they're, I think they're one inch, usually what they are.
Yeah, one is, one, one, one and three eighths, I think, just, you set up the one and three quarters.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at least one, right, on those.
Does it have a filling in the glass to make it look like?
Yeah, they're applying each other's glass, and then inside, between the airspace of the glass, it's a, like a black spacer.
That would also bring the price down.
Yes.
For sure, that's why, because, uh-
So the owner won't slap us around. Oh, he's going to suck your eye out.
He's doing a great, these guys are doing a great job, getting, getting him the approvals, so, you know.
There we are.
Give and take, um, yes, let's do that, let's do that, with a, with a minimal of a one inch profile. And then a, a two inch bottom sash rail.
Yes.
Yep, minimum, yeah, usually those companies have at least two inch.
I think if we can, we're going to try to get both sets from, from the same manufacturer, so that we get similar.
Yeah, there's, which is not, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Yeah, usually the vinyl is what, 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 like, this.
What is it, one Anderson or Marvin, they do all that stuff, they do everything, five of them. I hate to say Marvin, but it just, that, but money in that because of what they do, but they, um, they're great with those, but I'm not, so. I think, uh, yeah, six was done, I think seven, we still talked about, which was the, uh, trash room.
Oh.
All right, just, I don't want to.
Touch you up, we're just going to keep going, we're actually on the level dated on the seventh, uh, October, September seventeenth, and nine, seven, I'm just kidding.
Get the, get water.
I'm in line either.
Does he need one of these?
They have a special meeting.
I know, it's, it's this, it's this.
I know, right? No matter what, we'll talk into another meeting.
That's true.
Um, other than what was mentioned.
Yeah, just wanted to put that on record, that, since we guys talked about, you're going to change, um, I was going to go change now, moving forward.
And you, you submitted, um, I think in the midst, the pepper, that's a different project, you guys had actually submitted the color, uh, all of your colors, right?
Yes, uh, we have all select, I don't know if you, you had a, you had a-
He had it last.
Yeah, yeah, last one, yeah, it was, um, it was a separate sheet, um, that had all the colors.
I just want to make sure we knew it, um, and be a approval, not that it's necessary.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, it was, yeah, part of the last, so it should look like this.
Yes, metal panel siding, Sierra tan.
We just need one for the-
You had the sheet with the color there?
Yeah, we just need to include one with our, our set of building of purpose, can we have an extra one, what is it?
You want the third?
Yes, please, well, you can, you can-
Well, I'll hold it for a minute, and we'll-
Yeah, I heard of it first.
So we'll make this. Yeah. Okay. So now we're on number nine.
Um, yeah, we, we did take off the last, we took off a little bit to plate signs that were, had SW on it, um, and we talked with the owner, that he would just put, um, twenty South Long over the main entrance canopy, um, um, backwood, it'll, it'll be backwood as well, um, I'm and Gary weren't too certain if it was considered a sign, um, I, I don't know if I heard back, I don't think I heard back about that, um, but we didn't think it was going to be, if it, if it was, I would be a sign, or I feel required was that, that's what would hold up, what are we doing here, that?
So what are the materials?
Um, there'll just probably be aluminum, um, channel letters, um.
Channel letters are, are they normally internally lit, so?
Um.
No, they'll be backwood.
Well, when you're saying backwood, they're going to, they're solid letters, but shining out the back, create a halo effect, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, he's been working with Chris McCaffrey from, all over.
Oh, great, so, so Chris is going to propose something, and we're going to do a separate sign interview, so.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm going to start by Chris's, you know, ways, so, so it's kind of-
And we'd love to have it by now, but we did have not, or backwood.
Okay, so we're going to disclude signage.
And we'll get, yes.
And then disclude, why don't we do lighting with the signage, that makes it easier.
Okay.
Okay, you don't need lighting tonight, do you?
No.
Did you, did you submit cuts with that?
Yeah, we, we have to say, we, we, we have, there were, um, there were-
Oh, yeah.
Up and down.
Yeah, there was, there was a, a, a light, um.
Is it the black, it's a little black.
Yes.
So they're wall washers, and they're-
Did you see them on the go?
I do, um, so we got one here, one here, and one here. Yeah, so, can we get one here as well, like to make this look like it's a door, or, what do you guys see on, yes? So we got one here, and then, this one's here for that? Like, why is this, this is our back, so why is that one here?
It was just kind of, you know, so-
Should we just get rid of this one, or you, oh, you want it? What about if we just put it here and get rid of it here, or I guess?
Yeah, I like that better.
That's the entrance, yeah. Been for like twenty years, twenty five years, okay, one, two, one, two, and then that looks weird, okay.
Yeah, it's going to be the garage door.
Yeah, the entrance, how are you guys like telling people, hey, like, is it lit from inside? Okay, so it's on all the time, and it, when it becomes dark?
Yeah, but it's, uh, it should be a surface model, it's, um, linear picture, um.
What, uh, color temperature are we doing all of that?
These are warm, I don't think.
No, no, no white lights.
No white light.
Everything's on a heat break, ten thousand Kelvin. He obviously doesn't know what he's talking about.
No, I know it very well, I was, I was just tweaking it out. Probably twenty seven, we got one, we, we, we white house, um, because we, uh, we, we have to get it drawn again, um.
So that's-
So if we said less than three thousand Kelvin, we'd be okay, do you think, with? Do you think, with whatever you got going on here?
And if you say that, we'll just make, you know, maybe.
Well, and when you come back for signage, you could always just get them, and then if you're like, oh, we finally picked out what, what we're doing.
And as a matter of fact, it's thirty two or thirty seven.
Well, I mean, if we're, if offensive is fine, but I mean, maybe we could back off to say under four or something, I don't know.
Great, so, yeah. As long as we're, we're doing anything close to daylight, it was, it was more on three thousand range.
Okay, so we'll use my drawings as the exhibit. I just marked it on the old ones.
I got a new one.
Too many here. No, I've got new ones, I just have to mark them on the old ones. Just taking this pose and go quick. All right, so now we're on the number. So we're gonna exclude signage. So number ten. We just did that. So eleven, knockbox.
Yeah, knockbox we'll get it for now at the main entrance store, um, lobby. Obviously, that'd be subject to fire margin, the fire department, um.
Let's talk utilities. Because we've also been burned by that recently. Where do you expect utilities to come in? What do you?
Yeah, we.
Someone yourselves?
Yeah, those silver, we have utility pile over there.
Green, you said. Okay, so, yeah, okay, that's fine.
There's, there's a new pole they got, um, it's called last summer, big last summer, or sorry, come summer. Um, it has three transformers on it. And obviously, come time for the transformer, it's across the street. And then from the, from the pole, it's gonna go underground.
Okay.
And then completely build it to the.
They were in that hole, it's not moving, you were saying.
All right. So you have no hot boxes. You have no bollards surrounding any type of utilities. You have no split system condensers on the exterior of your building.
I, I mean, so it's all located up on the fourth floor.
So all mechanical on floor, floor roof, and you've done a site, a vision study and it's not gonna be visible from, from Main Street approach.
It all, it all set back, um, the elevator shaft, you know, if you see that, those are behind, I think it's right behind that anyway, so.
I mean, is the roof set down, is it down end just a little? Or the, you know, from the, from this point, the actual.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of.
Where are your electrical meters?
Got blocked, yeah, the rail's something, the, the, yeah.
Don't say, Chris is gonna tell us where. Where is, it's a constant battle. Where are you gonna tell them that they're going? Where, where, so where are you feeding to, where's your panel inside? It's up here, right?
Uh, those are, yeah, meters, these are gas meters.
Gas meters, okay.
Um, and electrical.
Oh my God, don't let them tell you, I will chain myself in front of that building before they put meters on top of it.
No, they're not, no, 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 this, this is why we came in here, 'cause we, 'cause we were able to put the gas meters in here. And kind of hide them, so to speak.
Yeah.
Um, we already put conduit under slab here that goes from this side of the building to the power company, so there's already pathway for the electrical to go.
Do you think they could mount it in the, um, in the garage on the wall? I mean, I guess not, 'cause you have a garage doors, probably a clicker operator per tenant, is that what you're doing?
Um, yeah, that was kind of up near with, with the owner as far as his, uh, his access control, um, under all that.
So you have to screen utility, you're to the lot line, to the lot line, right? So if they try to mount them, how are we screening them?
It won't be.
They won't, then?
It can't be, it can't be, it's not allowed, so.
Now, we have a whole set of documents, and where did, do you remember where our guy's place is? Are you in that, in that mechanical?
I believe so, but I, my, my recollection is that this one. Um.
I know. Yeah, there's also water, um, water meter room in there, so. So all of the, all of the utilities, main boxes are over there, will not be.
Will you do it?
Oh, God, you're waiting.
I'm writing it down.
No, there's, 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 there's.
Because you have to come back if it's gonna be, I mean, well, one grid shows up that day and they're like, we're putting it right here, and you're like, who are you talking about?
Was there any that you put in the, in the exterior? Um, it's a B zero out there, just.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there's.
So the.
So.
Are you referring to the one studio?
No, come on, yes, right here is village though. Constant, one, two, three, four, I can think of right now that went in, in the last, although it went in in the next five years. And they're just, they're just out there, they just wear it on. Yeah. Yeah, but shame on us, because the utilities in our, are settled after, usually it comes here, right? So then it has to be, you know, they have to be screened, and oftentimes, we can say that, they just still don't do it, so. I just wanna make sure the expectation is there, no visible, if we need to talk screening, then we need to come back and talk screening, so.
Yeah, like I said, I don't even know how we need to treat, yeah, so we're on your lot line, yeah, we used to take over property lines, it was just.
So, something tells me you're building a box into your building and mounting some there. Okay. All right, so we talked about utilities, we talked about signage, we're screening this evening, we talked about lighting. This is the only lighting you're proposing, just those wall washers?
Correct.
We talked a little about landscape.
And then. I'm, I'm not even saying I'm putting a ramp into the motion, if we're good, okay. Okay, do you actually want me to cite the CSL light fixtures? Or we're just calling them wall washers of?
That's the cut.
While you're gone, we, um, we asked them to take the two, the master building, the brick building.
Okay.
So I places brick and to do, um, a wood aluminum clad window.
Okay.
Not a true divide, but in the exterior, you have a move the exterior, bring down the move the interior, maybe interior spacer, maybe it look like it's almost like a floor grid.
Okay.
Um, and they agreed to that, they got rid of these two, they're making those windows again, because they're into bedrooms and talking about having their own, uh, uh, operable windows in bedrooms.
Okay.
Um, so we added a couple of light fixtures and we got rid of that one, so they're kind of next to the two entrances and we're flanking that. Um, so the door materials, we've got main entrance aluminum and glass storefronts. Trash room is gonna be a steel one panel door, so they've got panels, two, two of the steel and panel doors. Um, and these are going to be, um, faux window. What, what material are we saying those, you're actually, what, what, um, what material are we saying those faux doors were?
Aluminum.
Aluminum. Aluminum, and they're gonna put, uh, these break metal at the bottom of these to make them look like, they're gonna frame it in, make them look like they're like those.
What's the, what's the tr- the trash room door gonna look like? A metal door could be a very industrial looking metal door, or it can look like.
We panelize it.
Okay, good, okay.
Oh, you're saying there's siding, so, you know, we, so it blended a little bit.
No, that's okay.
It'll blend out.
Yeah, okay. Okay, okay.
Yes.
Garage door.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not a black shop going up the side.
There'd be a black shop inside the garage.
Okay. And the garage door is at the back of that entrance, correct?
It's not ready to see?
Yes.
Okay.
And they are going with the black exterior for those windows.
Okay.
And then they'll have their. So the white interior, that's gonna look weird though, with the, the two applied, and then what's the spacer?
We don't wanna make a final decision on the inside, because this really got a interior designer, kind of did all that already, I think it's gonna change.
Okay.
But I've seen personally the black on the inside as well.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you do black on the inside, that's up to you, I just think that having those two applied, the different colors, may look weird. Because you're gonna still see it from the exterior, I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't.
I don't really have much thought about it, it's just up the owner.
Yeah.
I think those, for those window people spend a lot of money on, so I think they make them look good.
Okay. Okay, um, I think, I think we're pretty darn close back to where we were. So. Any more issues, people? Okay. So I guess I'll turn and make a motion. Turn my fucking mic. Okay. Here is my agenda. Where's anybody's agenda? Here we go. Okay, make a motion for log twenty twenty five PB O nine A for architectural review. The project was reviewed for modifications made to the original approval in February of twenty, no, it was March of twenty three? It's twenty two, twenty, we'll make it major. It's right.
Okay.
Um, with the following clarifications and modifications. That on exhibit A, the moving left to right on the west elevation, that the, there will be an, some interior ceiling lights, LED lights, that will be set to a maximum of four thousand Kelvin in the open garage area. That the wall washers, as depicted on the elevation, will be CSL cylinders as submitted, also set to a maximum of four thousand Kelvin. They are to be as shown on exhibit A, one flanking each side of the main entrance, eliminating the one on the white brick to the north of the first window grouping, adding one to the north of the faux door and keeping one at the, um, the southerly faux door. Let's see, the faux door groupings will now be one door and one operable window as depicted on exhibit A. That the six inch steps from the trash room will have a metal nosing. And for clarification, the windows are as follows. All windows at the brick facades will be aluminum clad wood with a minimum of a one inch exterior and interior applied mutton with a spacer inside the paintings of glass to simulate a true divide window, otherwise known as simulated true divides. There will be a minimum of two inches for the bottom sash rail on these wood aluminum clad windows. They are to be painted black as depicted on the elevation in exhibit A. And the interior applied grid is to be of a color selected by the interior designer. The doors on the west elevation are to be as followed. The garage door. Do you know what you're doing yet? Is it, is it panelized, is it flat, what are you doing?
It's already panelized, it.
It's a sectional door and it's probably paned.
Yeah.
With windows, no windows? Okay, so the, um, the overhead door will be panelized, painted black with a row of windows here in the top. The main entrance door will be aluminum storefront framing with glass, full light glass as depicted in exhibit A on west elevation. The trash room door will be as depicted on exhibit A. It is a steel door, um, with, they are steel doors having a panel, one panel each. Not a flat panel, not a flat.
It's a flush.
Not a flush door.
It is a flush door with an applying panel.
Okay, so it is a, they're, they are flush doors with a, applied panel.
Right.
Around the exterior. Color to match the.
Jason's site.
Which one is that? Yeah, we can say who Jason's signing it. To match Sierra tan metal panel siding. That the faux doors on the white brick building will be aluminum with a break metal framing and bottom to create a simulated door. The south elevation is approved as submitted. On exhibit B, the east elevation is approved as submitted. For clarification, the rest of the windows on the building, other than the windows on the brick, are allowed to be vinyl as they are set back from the street and will give the appearance of different buildings than our more stylized brick buildings. On exhibit B, the north elevation is also approved as submitted. Allowing for vinyl windows on the north elevation. But also have the option for the, um, wood aluminum clad, if you need to have for the interior. So either vinyl or wood aluminum clad are acceptable on the red brick building. So this side here, you can have vinyl, or you can vinyl or wood aluminum clad, depending if you need them for the interior of those, um. You don't have any in the same, like if you have a tenant and you're like, you, you don't want vinyl, and this, you, you get a higher cost, because you're not, you know what I mean?
I got it.
So you're allowed to either in that red brick building. Okay, exhibit C as submitted is the material and finished schedule. That as a condition, the applicant will extend the concrete, including the apron, the sidewalk, to the opening of the garage. And clarifying on C three hundred, that all mechanical will be on the fourth floor, set back so it's, it's not visible from Main Street or south lawn. And that the new slash existing utility pole. And that the new slash existing utility pole to the south of the building is to remain as three transformers and the electric lines will be buried from the pole into the building. There will be no visible electric water or gas meters on the exterior of the building or site. And I'm submitting exhibit D as the light fixture, extra light fixtures that were selected. Exhibit E will be the vinyl windows that were submitted. The metal panels and the brick. Can you keep this? Okay. Not gonna be that. And exhibit F will be C two hundred and exhibit G will be C three hundred. I think that's everything you need to submit. So do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Second of my time, all favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Kate, do you wanna approve the minutes now that you've got a quorum?
Yes, well, actually, that was architecture. So actually, so, so that was the motion for architecture and site, so A and S please.
Okay.
So, uh, who's second on that? You, do you approve that, that I, that I restate the motion that it was for A and S?
I do.
Okay. All favor again?
Aye.
I'm Moshe first. Uh, we got four to zero. Okay. So we will give this, that means I have nothing. Don't do that. So can we try to put them in order there? Okay, let's stay do this one once tonight, I'm not sure if you saw that. Okay, yes, yes. Okay, so now we're making it wally. And.
I don't wanna do the meditation. He's gonna abstain from the meditating, so you don't need him for that.
Okay. Yeah, so don't start building, we need to go with permits.
You guys did a great job.
Yes, thank you, it was a pleasure working with you. Hope we see you again for a different project. We will see for signs of lighting.
Thank you.
Yes, cause that motion excluded signs of lighting, which we didn't. Actually, no, it approved the lighting.
You're stupid.
Okay, so does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Um, we made some prior modifications in the, or in the beginning of the meeting. Which included page numbers and that one of the motions included the motion for.
Five, three, six, five, name.
Which one was that?
Uh. For the Monroe muffler, blue and rose, deli.
Right. Okay. That it included both, and, and architectural motion to table, included both. So I think those were the only modifications. So the motion for approval of those minutes from September second, twenty twenty-five. Motion by David, seconded by.
A second.
Seconded by Wes, all favor? Aye, that motion passes four to zero. We can get Wally and finish this meeting. Okay. Want to grab him? Thank you, thank you, thank you, Wes. So Wes, join the meeting, four minutes. Wes, join the meeting, um, for the discussion of twenty South Lawn. So if you have the minutes to reflect that, um. For the roll call section, just put a time show for Wes. That was like nine o'clock, right?
Yeah, it was, okay.
Okay.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, there you go. Okay, so for now, we're going to talk about defense and we're gonna talk about, is this one right or my? I'm my agenda again.
Any idea where?
I found.
I saw him in the court.
Oh, the calendar. Does anybody see anything wrong with the calendar?
No.
I got January fifth.
Here he is there.
Okay. April sixth is Easter Monday. Is this building open?
Easter Monday, yes.
Um, can, can we move that to the thirteenth? April sixth, that's right during some stuff. So if we can move that to April thirteenth? Okay, so we're gonna have a problem with it for on an April. Um, so possibly an option would be to hold maybe two meetings in March. What does everyone think about having one on the thirtieth of March? Or meeting on the second of March, that is one, two, five weeks different. It's just a very long march. Cause the first is on a Sunday.
I cannot do that, that's private day reason.
Do that one, okay. Do, could the rest of you commit to the, to the thirtieth of March? Otherwise, the other option is April twentieth, which is like eight weeks between meetings. So we got one on March second, and then can we do the April meeting on March thirtieth? Let's try for that. Um, May?
Yeah, that'll be.
May fourth seems to be fine, July first, okay, no meeting in July, August third, September eighth is that Tuesday after Labor Day as per usual. October fifth, um, November second, and December seventh.
Okay.
Okay. So if we can move that April sixth meeting to March thirtieth, that was like a good count of it. Okay. The local law, number X of twenty twenty-five, does everybody have a chance to look at it? I have some questions. Or do you wanna present it?
It's been a while since I looked at it. Um, well, as you guys probably recall, this was the reason why this came up is we got that fence application on Main Street and, and there was some seemed to be consensus that frankly, didn't, the planning board didn't wanna have to be bothered with a simple, a lot of simple fence applications and there was a discrepancy between the fence provision of the, um, the fence section and, and the, in the site plan section. So this was largely, I mean, the, the main purpose of the proposed local law was to allow for administrative approval of, of, um, many of the fence applications, but also to clean up some of the inconsistencies. But one of the issues that came up was this issue, did I close this? Unfortunately, I did. Under the existing code, in the M U design standards, there is a provision of the M U design standards that would appear to limit the height of any fence anywhere in the M U to four, not to exceed four feet. Which at least didn't seem to be being, I, I think that that was intended to, to refer to sort of decorative fences, not necessarily perimeter fences because especially since where the M U butts up against residential properties, that it didn't seem to make sense to necessarily limit all fences to, um, four feet anywhere in the M U. So, um, but I wasn't comfortable suggesting exactly how what height limit be there. So the way it's drafted is essentially to allow for something that's an appropriate height and essentially allow that if that issue to be sort of dealt with on a case by case basis. I don't know whether you guys think that's a good approach to this, or if we wanna try to define, um, in the design standards, a height in, in the M U. Um, there was another issue here that this issue about, um, front yard fences. What the existing code talks about, a fence shall be open decorative design and permit clear visibility through at least eighty percent of the vertical area. And frankly, nobody seemed to understand what that was trying to get at, although Dave Sutton, who many of you probably know was at one time the code enforcement officer for the village, told me that that was proposed, it was basically to allow for split rail fences, which seems like a weird choice for the village. So, um, but again, that's not my, not for me to say, but, but basically proposing to take that language out to instead just require that whatever the fence doesn't unreasonably obstruct visibility. Does that really seem to be the main concern rather than dictating a split rail type fence? I mean, a picket fence seems like it puts essentially sort of village type of fence, but under that definition, it doesn't seem to be allowed. Um, and that was, and then we also wanted to prohibit, uh, chicken wire. That's it here too.
Which the Z B A designed something for applicants to be relieved from this eighty percent, and then we got chicken wire.
Right. So, I mean, I realize there's kind of a lot here, but again, the village board wanted your guys' input before it goes to public hearing. How, if you're not, I mean, if you guys wanna review this some more, we can certainly collect comments by email. Um, I'd be happy to take those and work with Gary to make changes to this, or if you're comfortable with it there. That, that's all. We just, before it goes to public hearing, as the design professional board here, they wanted some feedback from the planning board on you.
So I did have time to go through them. So page three, starting with A residential districts.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, A to.
Wait a minute, so I'm sorry, we helped this, this actually page me. So one, two, three.
Residential districts. I'll find out. A residential.
Oh, yep.
So A to C, so just need a comma before your, your cross out stuff after height, cause then it starts four. And then, so my comment is the ambiguity of unreasonably creates problems. So I would just suggest to word that somehow differently. And I know that we're not looking to be prescriptive as to say eighty percent, but unreasonably is interpretable. Um, also then A to C, no, A to three, enclosing a tennis court provided that the fence is not C twelve feet in height.
That's existing language. I didn't touch that, but if you wanna change that.
Well, because it's got this twelve feet, right? Usually tennis courts have, um, I'm losing it tonight, chain link. Um, but what if it's in a front yard? Cause that's what we do talk about, right? So say this chicken wire location became in my neighborhood that I stare at daily anytime I leave my house. Um, say it became a tennis court. Say the church put in a tennis court right there. They, that is a front yard because it's on a corner. Somehow they got the chicken wire fenced in the front yard. But, so there are fences allowed to be completely enclosed in front yards. So what if that became the tennis court? So I think we need to be very specific about no front yards. Like for these other items. Um.
So are there, you're saying there are tennis courts?
No, but say it, say a tennis pro moved in, well, we know the tennis pro lives over on Reist, but say this tennis pro bought the corner church there and, um, that front yard would suddenly have like a twelve foot fence, so. Just make sure that.
You have this going on pickleball.
I, I, right, right, right. I see what you're there.
That's true, tennis is outdated.
Tennis is outdated, yeah.
Racket sport, you know, cause there's a whole bunch of new ones.
Yeah, it's quite a better term.
Yeah.
So if you, if you go down Le Bron.
Or sports court.
If you go to sports court.
No, true.
Really, cause I can see.
They put it around the basketball court too.
Yeah, so.
But if you go, if you go down.
You just wanted to clarify.
Twelve foot.
That there's, those aren't allowed.
Yeah, in the front yard.
Yeah, which I don't think they are, but I can see why you're, because two is front yards.
Mm-hmm, and then three is something different.
Three is something different, but we can clarify or add some language that no such.
No.
Words.
Call it a sports court.
Not, yeah, not in front. Okay?
And then so B.
And how about four then, I mean, assuming.
Well, that's code, right?
Right, 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 right.
Can't touch that.
Right, right, right.
Um, so then B, M one, is that really what we're doing here? We don't have M one in the district, right? Or in the village, what's that?
We do. I mean, it's, it's that blue square down there.
Not, okay, so that George's?
It's where George is.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so you're just trying to cover all of the bases?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering why is it eight some places and twelve some places?
Uh, so eight was, eight was, where did I get? Again, this was M one, so I think the, the reason I'd add with A is because that's our industrial zone. And that there was, it's also near the thruway. I think that's where that came from, although again, if I.
It's due to thruway, but it doesn't affect the thruway.
It doesn't?
Um. I think, I don't, I don't think it goes all the way to.
No, the thruways over, beyond your.
Yeah, cause there was a ride.
Right.
Yeah, but it backs up. The ones on the north side are right back across the street from.
Well, yeah, right, right. And there's already a chain of things there.
And then I was.
That, that's the only reason why eight was proposed there is because it's that. But if you think it should be lower than that, I that's the sort of feedback.
I'm just wondering where the numbers come from, right? So I, I like your response, so. I was also like, where are the M ones?
Yeah.
Um, so then on page four, first paragraph, so I disagree that fences in M U districts not coming to. I didn't have to sit through the technical meeting that night, but I disagree that I think all M U, all M U parcels should be treated like M U parcels, whether they're inhabited by residential or mixed use or commercial only. Because when those properties clip, they are still in the M U district. So that's how I feel on that. So that's my comment for the first paragraph of four.
Right, what happened with that was because the, um, because the residential standard had, had to be applied. All we had with things completely non-discretionary, all there was for us was materials and things that were completely technical.
And I think where it needs to be fixed is the residential standard should not have been applied because it was an M U property. That's my personal feeling because they're still in the M U zoning. It's the same way as R, R three is where the schoolhouse is. The schoolhouse was a commercial property. It's the same way as R, R three is where the schoolhouse is. The schoolhouse was a commercial property, now it's, it's a, it's a not really, people live there. Vacation stay, I, I don't know. So, I mean, it's, it's the same, the same way as the churches in my neighborhood, got several, they're in the R three neighborhood. You know, they follow the zoning I thought to the R three zoning, um, just because they're used as institutional, do they follow a different zoning as R three? I don't know why we would be putting anything in the MU district, looking at it differently than the MU.
It was because there was exclusive carve out for residential in the, in the MU district.
And I think that's what we should fix.
Right, we have to fix one of the other.
Right.
You know, to have us sitting here spending time trying to explain fences and.
And, and, and the distinction that was trying, attempted to be, and I don't, and I don't, well, ultimately going to be up to the village board, but the distinction I was trying to incorporate here was if they're just coming in with a fence, they're not doing anything else, it's not a site developer, then, um, the fence officer can issue that permit. But if it's part of an otherwise, other, you know, it's any other trigger that would otherwise bring it before you, it would still be subject. So it was really meant to, you know, it doesn't have to be the first take, but that was the feedback I was, I got from that meeting is like, if all they're doing, because in that case, they were replacing a fence that was on.
But even in the case where, and I hear what you're saying, which is that the, that the, even a house, even a, even a residence should be subject to MU if it's in the MU district and not have this carve out.
Right.
Right? But even there, um, if it's just a fence and there's, it, it's still going to be mostly just what's the material looks like, things like that, that really don't give us much review.
Well, how is it different from the key hearing shop overall and others, it's just a fence?
Right. If it's just a fence, why do we have to look at it?
Because we're the planning board and these are MU properties.
But they, they would say it's.
And why are we reviewing any fences as part of site plan development then?
But because they're part of the overall site, but what we're reviewing here.
We're talking about piece field sites versus an overall plan for redevelopment. I just don't see the difference.
And just to go ahead, this is, nothing in this was intended to draw a distinction between residential or mixed use or commercial. This distinction attempting to be the way this is drafted, distinction here is between, we're just talking about a fence versus part of a larger site.
So the point is, the point is that night though, that what we, what we were saying was, we don't want to just be rubber stamping, and that's the only thing we could do there is rubber stamp.
And that's why I'm saying the code that triggered the rubber stamp is the one that needs to be reviewed. That, that's my opinion. Um, so obviously in paragraph two and I then, the word not in the second line, I disagree with that. The word appropriate in that second paragraph, it's the last sentence, the word appropriate that's highlighted, I have a problem with the word appropriate because it's subjective. Um, third paragraph.
But I mean, so what do you think is the?
Well, if you want to say not exceeding six feet, I would just say that, I wouldn't say appropriate.
Well, the reason why I like the part again, which is my, is because it gives you some room to say that in this particular, on this particular property, six feet's too tall. You don't need six feet. Because it's not appropriate for the site. Where if, I think if it just says not to exceed six feet, everyone's going to want six feet.
Well, I mean, you could leave it up to any more discretion or something.
Well, that's, that's the stuff.
Right. Um, uh, double I, last, last sentence, again, the word appropriate, and then I would, I would say up to six feet, not, not exceeding, because we all know there's waivers and it could be seven feet, you know, for the waiver.
Well, I'm not sure they could fix that problem without, other than carving out maximum fence size from the weight, which we could do. But I don't think it makes difference to say not exceeding versus up to.
Okay, uh, D four, upon the cause shown, that's ambiguous to me as well.
Sorry, where?
Uh, D four, the left, code enforcement officer.
Oh, that's existing language, I mean.
Okay. Um, number nine, calling out chicken wire instead of just all wire fences, I would just say wire.
Wire.
I would say, I would keep chicken wire in there and other wire.
Because that at least gives you an idea what they're talking about.
There's different weeds, and chicken I think is only a certain weave, so you could have, you could have weed like that, you know?
But it's a good point of reference, yeah, if you say in other wire fences, yeah. Unless you actually got chicken.
Well, yeah, so you are allowed that chicken wire if for a chicken coop, as long as you're under the.
A coop, not a fence.
Not a fence, not a fence, right, a coop, yeah.
On like, is it, no, Evans, chicken coop at the wall of the, the exterior fence and they have an interior fence that's all chicken wire.
Is that somebody who has a chicken coop?
Not, I don't think, I think it's free range, I'm not sure where they sleep.
Well, that's not allowed.
I don't, it's in Amper's.
Oh. Well, I don't think it's allowed in Amper's either, I think they're required.
Wes, we get chickens on our street, you know that, right?
I guess to the GMs, the house would be in law.
Oh, okay, done and done?
Four to six.
Well, I can take these comments back to the village board, so can Jeff, right, so if other people, either now or via email, there's a village board meeting next Tuesday, so I don't know, Jeff, when you guys want to have this ready to go to public hearing, but if anybody else has any other comment on these, just forward them to me and Jeff too. Thanks.
Okay, any other business? You got a favor? Seeing none, motion adjourned or second?
Second.
Pick one. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes six feet away, five.
Where do we stand?
I gotta digest this and we'll, we'll put on the work session.
All right.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I gotta clean it up.